September, the Acusa County Council meeting order to roll out.
Here.
Schmansky?
Here.
Wayack?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Wenzel?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Kuhn?
Here.
Okay, first is previous council minutes.
Move to approve it.
I like it.
Motion second to approve the previous council minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Next is treasurer's report.
Move.
Second. Motion second to approve the treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Next, there's nothing under citizens forum. And next is Joanne Brody with the United Way presentation. There we go.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Well, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Joanne Brody and I'm the director of the housing authority for the Sioux, Wisconsin Rapids. But the reason I'm here tonight is I was requested by Chief Woods to come here and speak to you regarding my representing the United Way campaign this fall as a government division loan executive. And I had come down and spoken to Joe and Sheila and Chief Woods last week, and that was his recommendation. So I'm not really sure, because he's not here right now, what it is I'm supposed to, you know, be presenting to you. Like, I know he had said that he felt that there would be some department heads here, and he felt that this would be a good opportunity for me to get my message across, but as I'm looking around, I see you're all the men.
No department.
So...
We gave them the optional. To do the presentation.
And, and I, I thought he said something about there being like EMS personnel or something here to, so apparently that's not the case, so I don't know if it would be a waste of my time or your time to have me even say anything here in light of, light of this. I don't know. Mayor?
Who is, do we have a United Way rep through the city that, that kind of runs the program here for the employees?
Well, what it was is that in previous years, we had Randy, he's a, I think, assistant police chief of Rapids.
Randy Johnson.
Yeah, Randy, he would come down here and give me a packet of stuff. I would distribute it out. And the only real givers really had been really me and Sheila, so I'd give it to her. And we had a couple people from the library did. We had one police officer last year, or maybe it was two years ago. But I thought we should try something just a little bit different, you know? Maybe instead of giving it to me, give it to, give it to somebody else, and then maybe, you know, with Joanne, come down here and maybe talk a little bit about it. I know there's some people that have kind of a bad attitude towards it, you know? I don't, I think it's, I think it's a good, I mean, there can be payroll options, per payroll deductions. There are pledge slips where you can give 10, 20 bucks or whatever, you know, and write a check, personal check. I don't know whether the city would consider, I, I think the city certainly they would accept it, but I mean, if we wanted to make a pledge to them, to the, to the function. But, I don't know, you guys, I, in the past, I would put, I would put stuff...
You've put stuff in our base blocks, yeah.
When I was still there, we had Kathy El, and she come down to the department heads, she came down to me, and then I, we held our own meeting with Kathy, so there's no sense of us trying to get all the crews together and, and do it, and that's the way it worked out the best, I think, Joe. I mean, then you, you knew where you stood when we done deal. And I think that's a proper way of going, huh? Yeah, that's the way we could do it. They have nine o'clock breaks, and if you're, if you're available during the daytime.
I can't be.
Like, at nine o'clock, go down, talk to them at break time, at least you eat your Public Works people.
Well, yeah, do they...
But, but it's just, it's just that, you know, there, you know, I would hear things off the cuff about, you know, like, about it, why they don't want to give to it, you know, and stuff. You've got a rep here that can, can explain, can explain it better than I could, you know? I mean, I always give to it, but...
Wheels on Wheels program is great, they got a lot of great programs in there, there's some stuff that you might...
It's up to...
It's up to individuals, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good that we get the...
Personal choice.
To them, they can make the decision and...
Couldn't we get some together, you know, and have all of them here at one time instead of having her, you know?
You could certainly...
Well, she can put a time at nine o'clock, everybody meet down here, or wherever they're gonna meet, and that way you're not running here and running there, you know?
And we could, Bill and Sean pick a date and time.
Pick a date, and whoever wants to, I mean, you know...
Why don't you do that, get hold of Sean Woods and Bill Kayrilli, and tell him we, you know, we'd like to pick a date, let's pick a date and time where we can come down and, you know, give a presentation, or whatever. At least to them, if not the crew.
And, I mean, at least for, for DPW, the crew would be there.
Yep.
And the on-duty officer could be there, and Sean and any of the other guys want to come in, they're...
Or all of them, or anybody else, yep.
Yeah, or, or, you know, going forward, we could also have a, a United Way rep here that does our, takes care of our stuff and coordinates with them to give the presentation, so if someone doesn't necessarily have to come down here, they can go to them and get the information.
Yeah, United Way's happy to do that. United Way is happy to come in and do a presentation. I know Chief Woods had thought that maybe the Acusa High School, or the Acusa School System was, was doing something, and that could be piggybacked with that, and that was one of his suggestions, if they were already, but I don't know if they are.
Yeah, maybe since Chief seems to, maybe doesn't need, him as our United Way coordinator that could work though.
You want the ambulance chief and the fire chief too?
I don't see why not. The fire department has got a meeting next Monday night, maybe try to get ahold of Mike, and ambulance chief wouldn't have another meeting. Well, actually, I think they've got a training the following Monday, which will be down in Harnish.
I guess I'm not familiar with you.
You should get that.
Well, you're funny.
Why don't, why don't you, in the morning, why don't you call Joe, he can get you their names and phone numbers, and then you can contact each one of them and decide, just, just the heads, department heads, not everybody's phone, but that way you can coordinate with them.
Just department heads.
Is that working?
Well, it, it could've, it could've worked, you know, without, you know, without even being here tonight. I mean, I don't know whether, you know...
Well, like I, like I said, I was, I was asked to be here and I'm happy to be here, I just, I didn't realize that it was strictly gonna be all the men and Joe here, or I wouldn't have bothered to waste your time, because I know it's valuable to you.
Even better, aren't there phone numbers on our website?
There, there are some, yeah, some department phones, yeah.
Some department heads are on our website, look on there, acusa.org.
Well, as long as you guys don't have a problem, I mean, certainly we do have departmental meetings, and if Joanne can go with some of those and maybe, you know...
Now, this is, you know, could just get some materials to them, to the department heads, just ask them to come down here and they could do a presentation.
Well, I've already dropped off the package of materials to, I think Sheila, either Sheila or Joe has it, or they...
Sheila has it.
Okay, so they have it, but I'm certainly happy to come and help.
Oh, but you don't mind coming down and doing the promotion?
No, that's part of what I'm supposed to be doing, is helping, helping with the process, so I don't mind doing it.
Yeah.
My, my board has approved my doing that, because they think it's, you know, we're all, we're all in this to help improve life in our communities, and so...
I just thought it was something to try something different, because like Randy would bring this stuff down, I would, I would distribute it to everybody, including to you guys. But then at the end of the year, to look to see what, you know, what, what was given, and I mean, it's, it's optional, who does and who doesn't, but we thought maybe that maybe, because I, you know, I'm not a member of that United Way, so I, I really don't know everything that's all about, you know, it's, you know, it's why we have Joanne here, you know, if you can explain any types of programs they do, you know, or...
Last year, they supported 44 programs that were run by 27 different agencies in Southwood and Adams County. So there, there's a whole lot of them, you mentioned some of them yourself, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Child Care Research and Referral, Jeremiah's Crossing, there's a, a ton of very, very, very good organizations that receive support from the United Way. And the main thing, I think, in their message is that there's a, an impression out there that was promoted several years ago when, when they posted the salary of the CEO of the big top guru from the United Way worldwide or whatever, and it was an extraordinary salary, and that really turned a lot of people off. And what the United Way of inner Wisconsin wants, wants everybody to know is that all the money that's generated here stays here, stays here within Southwood and Adams County, and they're, because of all the volunteers such as me, and Randy, and other people, Joe, who's ever helped me with the campaign, they're able to keep their costs down, so their administrative costs are, are lower than you would find with other groups, and those are two things that seem to be sticking points. Plus, the third thing that they started last year was this thousand dollar sweepstakes that they're, they're trying to incentivize people who either have never given before, if you give at least $26 in a year, that's undesignated to a particular organization, you'd be eligible to win this thousand dollars, there's three in Southwood County, two in Adams, or if you've increased your donation by $26.
You have to, you, you have to, if you've given $100 their better year, do you have to increase it by 20 something dollars?
You would have to, let's say you gave $100 every, last year, you would have to increase it by $26.
And the guy who never, and the guy who never gave, put in $25, and he would be in the drawing.
Yeah, if you put in, if he or she put in $26 and they never gave before, that's their, their whole point here is to, if everybody gives just a little bit, collectively make, collectively make more. Yeah, last year was the first year they did it, but I just also want to stress that that, those five $1,000 sweepstakes winners are not, that's not money that's coming from the campaign, those are corporate donors that have donated that, so I just wanted to stress that.
Do employers ever match funds, like, if we, you know, if our employees here donated, can we do a match of that?
You absolutely can do a match of it, I haven't seen it really happening in a governmental setting, I think that's more common in a, in the private sector, but you certainly can, there's a matching protocol.
Consolidated used to do, if we got so many, they used to match, and then they'd get a bonus for more, I think, yeah, Necco did it, and...
Does the city, does the city give money to United Way in general, or any other type, or is it just in...
No.
No.
Not as a city...
Might not be a bad idea to maybe incentivize some people to, you know, just to match, I mean, try to, for the city to help support them, stuff. But...
Do you want, so you, do you think we ought to just see how much money we can collect through employees and then, and then entertain that, at a later day?
I would, I would say that, that probably warrants more discussion, because I don't know if everybody wants, you know, as far as municipality, that's why probably people don't do it, because experts can donate if they want, so...
Well, employees have till November 22nd to, if they want to be eligible for the sweepstakes, to get their, their pledge information in. And I do have, you know, before I leave, if any of you do want any, I do have some pledge slips here, if any of you want me to provide you with one, I'd be happy to. I understand you probably have other employers or get these from other people.
I guess it works, yeah.
So, I can understand if you don't want them, and like I said, I wasn't expecting that it would be directed towards you, so... Does anybody have any other questions, or anything for me?
No, I mean, I think the best bet is to probably get ahold of the department heads and set up meetings with them and do the presentation for their employees.
Okay, that sounds good.
Worth a shot.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Bye.
Oh, I get older, she called you a gentleman.
Yeah. And on camera, too.
You guys were included in that, too.
One other thing under citizens forum, Rob and I got a phone call this afternoon from Bill, Domtar approved a $3,000 grant, and I think Bill actually got the check today for the recreational grant that we had applied for, and that'll go to the disc golf course that he's gonna get set up going down in the park.
Excellent.
So that's 13,000 that they've donated to the city in the last, basically, 12 months for recreational facilities here in town, so...
Have they've got somebody coming in to set that up, or help set it up?
Bill said there's somebody that he's been in contact with in town that's, that they're gonna meet with, and hopefully he actually lay out the course down in the park, and he won't have to do the install on it.
The only reason I asked, I'm training that guy right now on my job, and he's been to that big time, and he knows a person who does that professionally, or not professionally, but he's set up numerous courses around the area.
It would hurt to contact Bill, because the more, more the merrier, or maybe...
Because the one thing I found out, I mean, this, this kid lives in Breeze Disc Golf.
There's a lot of people, living around, a lot of people play that.
Yeah, and they travel all over the state and play, and if you get the right course set up and the right amount of difficulty involved, you can, you can actually pull in a lot of bodies into something like that, but, you know, that's a big time deal.
And, and like at, at Standing Rocks Park in Polbrook there, it's actually four feet thick, I mean, you pay like $3 or something, you go play.
Right.
Because it does take maintenance or something.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not advocating that, I'm just, if you have a good course, you can charge it.
Yeah.
And then that's just really to maintain it and improve it.
Right.
We'll have our own US Open.
We'll go.
But, yeah, I mean, any expertise on that would probably help.
I'll have to ask, I'll, I'll see him Thursday again, I'll see if I can get the guy, because I guess the guy's pretty decent to work with, as in cheap, no charge type, but then, but he knows his stuff.
That's the best price we get.
Yeah.
Big bids on that, that no charge, free and cheap.
Yeah.
Okay, move on to committee reports, first is Ways and Means, Chairman Wayne.
Move to accept the minutes as read.
There's a motion second to approve the minutes as read, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Acusa County Council, Ways and Means meeting was held at September 10th, 2013, at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Members present were August Wayack, Robert Schultz, Garrett Kuhn, and Brad Hamilton. Also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Rob Wenzel, Chris Thorson from Advantage Insurance, Larry Krupsek. Number one, audits at all the bills. Number two, insurance presentation by Advantage Disability Income and Accident Insurance. That would be just discussed, I believe. And number three, recommend Brad Hamilton attend airport conference in Wisconsin Rapids, registration fee for conference. Four, recommend Brad, recommend it be sent one person to Rutaire Conference in Wausau. Five, recommend Grand Class A license, combination beer license and liquor license to Dollar General.
Could you hold on, I have five for something.
Okay. Uh, we move to recommend, well, number one audit of the bills, correct. Three rec, number three and four.
Second. There's motion second to approve items one, three, and four of the Ways and Means meeting, roll call, move. Krupsek?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Yes. Wayack?
Yes. Probably don't think of, he forgot me once, Terry.
Forgot me? Yes, 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 yes. Okay, discussing on number, number five, Dollar General.
Talk about it, not my business. First, I took, I talked about it, not my committee, I'm personally...
Okay.
You just need a motion.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, you need for... Yeah, we made the motion.
We need, we need a second, you made, you're, you're... I'm second. You're chairman, okay.
This motion is to approve it.
Yeah.
Motion second on the floor to...
I hate, I hate a motion to disapprove it, because then you're going, no, it goes, yes, and it's just...
Yeah, if you approve it.
It went one way and then...
It's using me, too.
Yeah.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No.
Kuhn?
No.
Carry it. Next is Public Works, Chairman Krupsek.
Public Works has one meeting to report on this month, I move to have minutes as read.
Second. Motion second to approve the minutes as read of the Public Works meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, to the Honorable Mayor and members of the Acusa County Council, Public Works meeting is held on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013, at 8:30 PM in the Acusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Robert Schultz, August Wayack, also in attendance were Phil Kayrilli Senior, Bob Atkinson, and George Carlson.
That was AM.
AM.
And I was here, too.
And the mayor.
Sorry about that.
So everybody knows, when I do this, I'm gonna be doing this in two steps, number seven and number eight will be a separate vote. Uh, I have one, request from Bob Atkinson, baseball coach, for helping updating Olive Field water line, recommend upgrading water line for approximately $7,100. Item two, discuss the 2013 road projects. Item three, discuss water issues and updates, recommend $200 reimbursement to Dan Houston from the Acusa longer map. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, this was, this was an old one from over a year ago, and then somehow it got lost in the mix. He had come to the meeting asking for a $200 reimbursement when his business was down, he had a tank in there that sprung a leak, and he had to wait umpteen weeks to get this tank, and he had come and asked, and it's just got buried in the, everything and forgotten about it, I don't know if it was his mistake for not coming back, or however it happened, but he contacted Bill again, who contacted me, and I told him I would bring it back to him, and evidently I, there was never a recommendation in one way or the other from when he first came in.
So, why, why is it our, our fault?
The $200 is that he actually had no business open at that time.
And this is for suing? Suing? Or why?
It was a meter charge that he's requesting. Right, it was a meter charge, because he, his business wasn't even open half the time, period. And he should've, what he should've done, the right thing to do would've been to come down here, had him shut the water off. He didn't know.
Okay, so if, if you have a house and you don't use your water, you charge people, then they tend to start getting meter费, right?
Unless they stop down and shut it off.
Unless they stop down.
So, and that's all he was asking for. That, everybody satisfied with that? Number four, discuss wastewater treatment plan issues. Number five, moved by Wayack, second by Schultz to go in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 1985.1C, to interview candidates for DPW water, wastewater position. Item two, discuss DPW full-time position. Number six, move to, by Wayack, second by Schultz, to go into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 1985.2, to make recommendations on matters discussed in closed session. So, for a separate vote, I would like to recommend items one, three, one and three.
Second. There's a motion second on the floor to approve items one and three of Public Works meeting, roll call, move. Wayack?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Uh, item seven and eight, recommend Derek Freeman for DPW water wastewater position. And number eight, recommend hiring Griner Shesky for DPW full-time position.
So are you separating them two, or are you taking them both?
The only reason is my son works there in the department, and he just wants, I just...
Oh, you just wanted to separate it off, you're both...
Right, I just want to take... Yeah, we can run both together.
That's fine, I'll second.
Yeah.
Motion second to approve items seven and eight of the Public Works meeting, roll call, move. Wenzel?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Stayed.
Wayack?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Just an update on item number one, one of the things that was discussed in that, that morning, one of the reasons that this is happening is there's going to be a state Legion tournament here next year, and they're putting out a brochure, and they're requesting for sponsorship and things like that, and with a thousand dollar sponsorship, you would get top billing, flag, and announcements, and all this stuff throughout the tournament, and they've agreed to give us the ability to be classified as a top dollar sponsor with this...
We should have seven, seven top...
Yeah.
With a whole lot of dollars.
Hundred dollar kicker. Yeah, so, but they're gonna put that all in, be classified as one of the top donors for it, so it'll be in the brochure and all of that.
Well, what are we doing, just running new water, or...
We're running, uh, putting in a new shut-off valve that needs to be replaced, and banging a bigger water line across.
Two inch?
Yeah, I think it was two inch.
Or is it current two inch?
Yeah, it's going to... It's going to a two inch. I can believe it, to help them speed up when they water in between games and things like that, they have an hour downtime, and right now with the service that's there, they don't have that much time, so this will get it done faster, and hopefully, the goal is to bring in some more, uh, bigger tournaments, not only Legion, but there's some multiple age tournaments that they want to try to get in and things like that.
Excellent.
So hopefully, it would, it would benefit...
Everybody.
It will benefit, yeah. Because it's a lot...
And we've had nothing but problems over with the water line, so... Yeah. For years.
And since, since they're working on the roads down there, it'd be a good time to sue it outside.
Exactly, that's right. We figured it'd all be tied in together.
Four, five different shut-offs.
Yeah. Okay, Public Safety, Chairman Schmansky.
Public Safety have one meeting, a motion to accept minutes as written, second.
Motion second on the floor to accept the minutes as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Acusa County Council, Public Safety Committee meeting was held on Thursday, August 29th, 2013, at 5:30 PM in the Acusa County Council Chambers. Members present were Terry Schmansky, Brad Hamilton, Evan Peterson, and Robert Wenzel, also in attendance were Mayor Al Marco, Garrett Kuhn, Larry Krupsek, Dave Ryan Schmidt, Don Harnish, Ken Moody, John Bidwell, and John Woods. Number one, recommend accepting renovation of Keith Keller from the Fire Department. Number two, recommend auto aid with Rome Fire and Grand Rapids Fire. Number three, update on building remodel, recommend blueprints be drawn up for the ambulance area remodel for approximately $7,730, money to come from the ambulance sub recount. Number four, discuss a, discussion on ambulance budget, process, staffing ideas, and goals. Uh, we need one, two, and three?
Second. Motion second on the floor to approve items one, two, and three of the Public Safety meeting, roll call, move. Schultz?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Next is wage and salary, Chairman Hamilton.
Wage and salary have one meeting this month, on August 28th, I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion second to approve the minutes as printed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Acusa County Council, the wage and salary meeting was held on Wednesday, August 28th, 2013, at 5:30 PM in Council Chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Chairman Robert Wenzel, Secretary Larry Krupsek, also in attendance was Mayor Al Marco, Mike Hardy Fire Chief, and Dave Reinsen, Assistant Fire Chief. Item one, moved by Wenzel, second by Hamilton, to go in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 19.851C, Fire Department Chief and Assistant Chief wages, all members voted yes. Item two, motion by Hamilton, second by Wenzel, to go into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Stat 19.852, to make possible recommendations on matters discussed in closed session, all members voted yes. Item three, recommend raise of $46.28 for the chief, and $31, excuse me, $33.31 for your assistant, for your assistant chief, that's per month, effective September 1st, 2013, and they receive raises equivalent to full-time employee raises effective January 1st, 2014. Item four, discuss the employee handbook. Item five, recommend the Fire Chief be reimbursed for... Item five, recommend fire chief be reimbursed for lost wages minus reimbursed expenses for the subpoena trial, at a trial. Item six, men returning office hours Friday, 4:30, on Friday, at 2:00, 4:30 PM effective September 10th, 2013.
On six, we, we still have that summer hours.
The summer hours, yeah, we'll go back to summer hours next year. Do it, we'll recommend it. It's just like a winter hour, summer hour. I don't have a problem with that. We can discuss it again. Um, I move to items, for items three, five, and six.
Second. Is motion a second to approve items three, five, and six of the wage and salary committee meeting. Roll call vote. Hamilton?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
That's it for committee reports. Anything under old business? Next up is new business. First thing on the agenda is the business development grants, uh, that all their paperwork was submitted to me by, uh, Lee from MSA. We discussed it a few times at Rob's committee. I tried to make the corrections the best I could on my, on this. Sent it out to everybody. I'm sure, hopefully everybody's had a chance to read it. Uh, like I said, the gentleman from the motorcycle shop is ready to move forward with his expansion down there. So he'd like us to get this going as soon as possible. His goal is to get the garage that he wants to put up in the back enclosed before the snow flies, so. Any discussion on this, basically like I said when I sent it out, is all I did was take out CDA or RDA and put in Public, or Property and Rec Committee and City Council following the steps, basically as far as, it would initially go through your committee for approval with recommendation to the council like we do everything else. Um, so I did not change any of the figures that were in there, 'cause basically when we discussed it, I think everybody was pretty much okay with those numbers. We're not talking large sums here, um, so.
I'd go ahead and make a motion. I wanna make, what, what do you think the motion should be? 'Cause I'd like it to go forward. I didn't expect a motion to adopt the grant, grant program?
Recommend adopting the saving Nacousa business and facade improvement grant program.
Yes, I'll second.
Is there an agreement that we gotta get into with MSA, do you remember?
No, this has nothing to do with MSA. This is all strictly, uh, Property and Rec Committee and City Council. There might be something, uh, on the part of it where talks about the Department of Revenue may request proof, um, for TID. I'm assuming that'd still be TID number one, um, result.
We just have to prove that it's within the, the.
Right, yeah.
Funds from there, right?
Funds from that going back into that, so.
I, I think, I think it's great if we get someone to, to expand it or something.
Yeah.
And every little victory helps us. Seems to draw a lot of people.
We got our first one. Let's wait for this.
Yeah.
Let's go. Ten thousand bucks on the draw.
So we're just basically to approve, uh, this business improvement grant program?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Recommend adopting saving Nacousa business.
Improvement of Nacousa.
Yep.
Grant program. Bit of good, bit of good. Should've come up with a better acronym.
All right.
Yep, roll call vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Okay, next under old business is, uh, there's been some more bills submitted, um, even after the Public Works meeting the other day involving the Metcalf and Quinn and wastewater plant bills. Uh, Joe, you wanna talk about it a little bit?
Sure, uh, everybody's got this packet right here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the other day I got an email from, uh, Dan Greavy and he had attached a couple, uh, of bills that had been outstanding, one for $11,007, $18,80, and the other one for $3,003, $76,18. Wanted to know what the status was, so, uh, I'm putting together this pay request to send in to Julie at USDA along with the Metcalf and Quinn one. And, uh, there was this, uh, one table, the Odenhoff, but it was for turf, turf restoration, uh, that kinda has sorta had been approved before, but you know, when they got into this, uh, lawsuit or whatever that's going on between Odenhoff and NKVK and just kinda backed off on everything here, but, and I'm not sure how, again, as far as payment of this stuff, if Julie's gonna come back and, and, and say, well, you know, this claim could be out of the construction account, but this would have to be out of the retainage. Cause you know, cause, uh, last month we approved, uh, Quinn working with four different, uh, to settle four different subcontractors, you know, out of that retainage. And I know that, that Julie has been keeping pretty close tabs on MSA as far as, uh, what the total engineering, uh, cost of the project should be. And, uh, you know, he, they've, they've put additional charges on here, I think dealing with this lawsuit. Like Greavy put down like 66 hours. I don't know what all he was doing, but, uh, that's what he put down.
Kinda wish I knew what that was too.
You know, Mark? Uh, no.
Well, sure is. Sixty-six hours, all the rest of.
Yeah, there's, and he almost said six hours total hours. Total labor, $10,500.
I still don't see why we don't get a copy of what they're doing.
We're supposed to begin copying.
We asked them about that. We talked.
Well, they won't approve it until they give us what we want?
They were, they were supposed to do that.
Itemize all them.
Itemize, they never do.
Then let's not, let's say we're not gonna approve it until we get.
They did for a little while.
That's 'cause I, I won't vote for it unless we get what we're asking.
Mm-hmm.
Cause every, every, it seems like every couple months we get another.
Is that some of it in here though? Wait, no, let's make careful plan.
And I wonder why they.
MSA bills is the last sheet.
That's the last sheet. Here's, here's on miles. Three hundred miles and 55 cents of 55, 5.555 a mile, which is a federal rate. But what'd they do for 300 miles? Where did they go? You know, where they come in here? I didn't know what they were doing. I, 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 like I said, what do we need to approve tonight, Joe? I, the what, what do we need to?
Well, maybe, maybe you've answered my question is that, is, is that I can, uh, show Greavy this memo and say is that we want more of a breakdown for.
Yes, yes.
For what they did.
For what they, you know, that bottom. They've got 85.75 hours and they're saying additional services associated with delayed project closeout, including meeting and correspondence regarding punch list and, uh, warranty items, lien waivers. Got that lawsuit going on May 20th of last year to June 30th this year. I don't know, when is this project gonna be, when is this project being taken care of?
That's a good question. They've got punch list, they're, they're, and I could be wrong. They're the engineering services firm. If we have to pay to go over the punch list, the stuff that's not completed? Cause they're responsible for making.
That's all in your.
Contract.
That should be in the contract. We should be paying more.
Why would you?
I mean, I don't know, 'cause I didn't, I never.
With this lawsuit, it, it works different though, and I'm not sure, and that's my question to them, is I can write down 60 hours.
Yeah.
Pay me.
No, okay.
I gotta show you what I did in 60 hours.
If they're gonna charge us additional, they need to show us why they're gonna charge us additional and where in the contract, you know, for the services, it doesn't cover what they're doing. They need to prove to us why they need that.
Okay, okay, so.
Do, do you guys agree with that? Because I.
Or we can, we can do a partial on this, couldn't we?
Right.
Yeah, I, Metcalf, Met, uh, Metcalf and Quinn has a very detailed broken down.
And so you don't have a problem with Metcalf?
No.
And that's where, that's where I was going with them.
Yeah.
Odenhoffen, uh, at 3,600, uh.
Best lawyer in.
Yeah.
3,600, we, we knew one.
That was kind of approved before.
I think it was.
And he signed it, but I don't know, we get data now, but, uh.
I would, I would think, Joe, that we could tell MSA that they would like to have a copy like, like Jim's got here. Break it down a little bit so we know what we're dealing with.
Okay, both, both, um, what about this MSA bill for 3,300? Well, they've got a breakdown here for team leader Greavy and, uh, Schubert the engineer and, uh.
What did they do? I don't understand. I don't get.
What's wastewater construction observation, 'cause they're being here and watching them work and, but, uh.
But isn't that part of the original contract?
Well, that, you have.
They're billing us from Sep, from September, or, excuse me, 7 is what, July and August of last year, now May. Look, there's a May charges on it.
The thing's been dead in the water for a long time. It's been dead in the water.
This is when they took over bread from when, when they had the problems.
Is this what CI head go away?
Right. So I, that's what I'm, that's the way I'm reading it. And in order for you to get into the, what they did and what they didn't do, you'd have to hold the contract and read it. And I'm sure it's gonna overlay that as far as what they can do and what they can't.
You've dealt with this already before. What do you think?
I, like I said, Brad, when I was still on, I said, we, we gotta have a breakdown.
Well, let's get the damn breakdown.
And, 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 and if Joe got the breakdown, we could pay it. I, I'm for paying the bill, but I'd like to see what we're paying for.
Yeah, and, and if you get a breakdown and everybody, and the mayor's okay with it and.
Right.
Where are you okay with it?
It's, it's together and it says professional, yeah, professional services is pretty vague.
It's been two year, two years ago we asked for that too.
Yep.
Dan Greavy's hourly is higher than our attorney.
Right.
Well, if, if you guys, I'm gonna revise this pay request for Metcalf and Quinn and then this Odenhoffen one. And we'll, we'll just kinda cross, and then, uh, we'll send out, we'll take the, the, the two MSA ones off, all right?
Okay.
We'll take the two MSAs off. I'll retype this other one, so it's just Metcalf and Quinn, Odenhoffen. And then, uh, in total, have the mayor sign it. And then, uh, tell Greavy we need more detail on those two bills.
Agreed.
And then that can go back to, uh, Public Works Committee.
You spend 66 hours doing what? You spend six hours doing one.
Yeah, we need to itemize, yeah.
All, all I'm asking to know is, is what you did. You know?
And where it says that we, you know, why?
Why are we getting stuck with this? What is it? Why is it our problem?
Cause you gotta retain it. You gotta use that up.
I guess, I would say with, uh.
Everybody wants a chunk of it before it's gone. Hey, I told you when we started.
Yeah, I just say, don't, don't keep rubbing it in, don't keep.
Maybe we could, maybe we could do a recommendation to authorize mayor to sign, uh, uh, pay request number four, or application for payment for number 14, uh, for Metcalf and Quinn, Odenhoff bills only or something, or revised.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, revised. Revised, no, payment number 40.
Okay.
So it would be nice to know when we're actually done with this.
Sixty-four. When we're done with our team, when a favor.
I mean, are we, are we really close?
Probably.
We're not?
We're not?
We're not? What are we waiting on? Do they always, OCI stuff?
They're still all feuding with that, uh.
But the, the work is done.
Yeah, well, the work is done. It's just the lien waivers and all that other stuff.
He's not paying, he's not paying the subcontractor. That's the big problem.
Okay, and there's a motion a second on the floor to approve, uh, revised application number 14 for the Metcalf and Quinn and Odenhoffen construction. Roll call vote.
Coon?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Wenzel?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
I think we did the right thing here just for the simple fact that didn't we say any of this stuff was supposed to go through Mr. Quinn anyhow? For now. Basically this council is, I'm not gonna say wash their hands, but, but turn the legal aspect over to, to Mr. Quinn.
Yeah.
So, um.
You can, you can advise us where to go with all of it.
Right.
I like that.
Ooh, look at that. That's nice to see again.
Okay, uh, going to the committee, or, uh, department reports. First is police chief's monthly report.
Who's approved is presented?
Second.
Motion is second to approve police chiefs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Public Works Department. Motion is second to approve Public Works Department's monthly report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Ambulance Department. There's two of them on there. Done, combined them.
Yeah.
Move. Motion is second to approve both of the ambulance department monthly reports. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Fire Department, monthly report.
Move.
Second.
Motion is second for the Fire Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's no Building Inspector, Community, Community.
Senator?
Senator. Yeah, another inspector.
So.
Motion is second to approve Community and Senator monthly report.
Can we have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Airport Commission.
So move.
Second.
Now before, I just wanna make, point out that, uh, I buried it, of course. Here, under, and this one is, uh, dated, uh, August 29th. In the back of it, something I've been asking in, we just get, finally got it back, the economic impact statement. Basically what the airport does for the central, or south central, or south central, try it again, southern Wood County area. And, and if, actually it affects most of Wood County, not, more than that, but, uh, this is, uh, it, basically what it boils down to is it has a total economic output of over, of over $2 million. It's page three, right at the bottom right here inside. Then, uh, if you wanna read through that or if you have read through it, um, I really, uh, I thought that, that sort of was gonna be pretty close to that. And I think it's a, it's a good thing we're supporting it, um, not that I'm trying to make, but. And one thing about the minutes, on page two of the minutes, under E, I see it be four E. Um, fixed base operators, August report, motion by Hamilton, second, is there approved? Approve the August fixed base operator report. Should say, it says airport vouchers. It should say fixed base operator. Just so you know.
Okay, is motion a second to approve the airport commission report?
Go move.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Prove those bills. We've all, we've got copies of them. Any questions on any of them that are there?
Who's approved the bills?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote. Do we do roll call?
Yeah.
Okay. Wenzel?
Yes.
Krupsek?
Yes.
Schmansky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Wayack?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Uh, two quick things for upcoming meetings.
Three.
Okay, three. Um, September 27th, like I said, at 10 o'clock in the morning. As of now, it's gonna be just the committee, the whole down here. Melissa from the chamber is bringing, wants to bring in a woman from, uh, Weidig to do a, kind of a strategic business planning with us. I tried to get her to come tonight, but she wasn't able to make it. And second one, I've talked to John Troutman the last couple of weeks, last week or so about budget. He would like to see us, uh, he wants to do a meeting like we did last year, but he would like to see us hold off until all of the September numbers are in the budget. So we're looking at, uh, Monday, October 14th, 1:00 in the afternoon till whenever we're done. You're up on the water, so. So.
We could call you.
Yeah, you can call me.
Yeah. Go answer, but we're probably. And what'd you have?
Um, I don't know if we wanna run it through my committee, Rob's being at, uh, his committee, but with the monies that Don Tarz will graciously, graciously given us the last couple of years. I brought it up before about putting some signage up there in the basketball court after it's done.
I thought we were gonna do that once, once the project's complete, we will be highlighting that.
Okay, absolutely. Cause there's more than just Don Tarz meaning too that should be on it too, not, not trying to downplay it.
I agree.
But there, there was a lot of other help that came our way, you know, as in freely.
Donated, a lot of donated.
Donations.
A lot of donated type of that.
And I just wanted to make sure, you know, if, if it was at all possible to get something set up this year yet. If not, I mean, that's, that's understandable to me.
We should, you should be able to finish it off this year.
Yeah, as soon as, you know, Phil's been working with, uh, contractors, they, they get something in there as, as cheap as possible, so.
Yeah, cause I, cause I would like to get, uh, get ahold of our bill manager and have him down and they would have, him and, uh.
Really cutting ceremony.
Yeah, something like that, I think would be great. Yeah, and so that's a lot of monies come our way and I think it deserves recognition.
I agree with you.
I agree with you.
Anything else?
Want to do a jury?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Told.